Good evening, we'd like to welcome everybody to the Wednesday, February 15, 2017, meeting of the Board of Education for the Enlarge City School District of Middletown. At this time, if you could please rise for our pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Knapp.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a belief in justice for all.
Any moments of silence, Mr. Perino?
No.
And now for the mission statement of the Enlarge City School District of Middletown, Mr. McElroy.
I should know this by heart by now. We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Show move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval of the regular minutes. Roll call, thank you, Mrs. Clark. That's my favorite thing to forget each meeting.
Mrs. Bluman, Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mrs. Knapp?
Here.
Mr. McElroy?
Here.
Mr. Perino?
Here.
Mr. Tobiasin?
Here.
Pastor Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. I need a motion to approve the regular minutes of February 2nd, 2017. Moved by Mr. McElroy, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We're going to move on to recognition announcements and community reports. We are recognizing our high school all county music students this evening. We're going to do the board first because we're still waiting on a couple of students, so we'll push it back until I get the high sign from out there that we're okay to move forward with the recognition. So we'll start off with Pastor Williams this time on the left side.
I do want to give a shout out to some people that we don't overlook, but then to a certain degree, we've missed them. But there's a shout out to all of our crossing guards that serve on the corners, making sure that our children are able to cross the street safely, with it being winter and with the icy weather and with the different things that's going on, and also with the high traffic volumes. A lot of our kids are still walking to school, especially, you know, and I primarily get to see what's happening at Carter's side and over at the Presidential Park side. And so I want to give a shout out to those crossing guards that I see every morning that are out there early diligent. Most of them are retirees and senior citizens, so I just want to give a shout out to them and thank them for what they do in ensuring that our children are able to even get to school safely by walking. So that's pretty much all I have this evening, so thank you.
Thank you. Good words, Pastor Williams, and, you know, we'd appreciate it if the public at large can make sure when they're approaching those intersections to keep an extra eye out. I believe it's a city law, you have to stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. And I still see a lot of them going right through them, trying to beat the kids getting to the corner. So we want to, we've been fortunate in our district over the years with the amount of walkers that we have, we'd like to keep that street going. Mr. Crescendo. Mrs. Knapp.
Knapp.
Mr. McElroy.
Just to echo what Pastor Williams had said, and thanking the driver, bus drivers, who do a really good job day in and day out, especially on icy and snowy days of getting our kids back and forth to school. I can't, you know, it's hard enough driving like a four-wheel sedan, I can't even imagine driving these enormous buses and doing it, you know, as they do. And to buildings and grounds, of course, for the work that they do, you know, making sure that the buildings are ready for kids to and staff to go to school and, you know, be ready to go. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention was it was a parent meeting for a literacy program that's starting at Maple Hill Elementary School, and to give a, I guess a shout out to Principal Creedon and AP Kelly who were there and helped facilitate that, and then obviously the staff who are going to be teaching. I think it's a very valuable opportunity. And people ask me all the time, "Oh, you know, you live in Middletown, do you really like want to stay there?" And it's like, "Why wouldn't I? I mean, there's so many great programs here for our kids, whether it's the dual program, mastery programs, you know, and from elementary all the way up to the high school. Tremendous work is being done at all levels." And, you know, it's no surprise that more and more people actually are starting to move into the district. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy, Mr. Tobiasin.
Well, I certainly want to give a shout out to our music department. All I can say is wow. I know I contacted the superintendent after the Middletown string side-by-side with the Greater New York Symphony Orchestra. What a phenomenal experience. It was phenomenal for both our students and for the community, and I think the standing ovation at the end said it all. And to see that conductor and how he related to each group as they came up gave an explanation. It just, anyone that didn't see it missed out, and I did ask if it was being televised. I was told, yes, that it is available. Absolutely, absolutely beyond words. So my thanks, I don't know how it was arranged, and I certainly look forward to this occurring in our district again, but well done.
Thank you, Mr. Tobiasin. The Board of Education and Mr. Tobias in particular, the music teachers themselves initiated that, found that opportunity for our students and came and talked to Dr. Eastwood and I about having it done, but it was certainly, it stemmed from the music teachers themselves.
I just hope it occurs again, and I think even the repertoire and the way that the professionals were dressed so that our students could see that when they go, the black outfits, et cetera, et cetera. And even our students who had to give the cue for the warm-up, I mean, everything was, you would not believe that it was a school event. It was very, very professional.
Thank you, Mr. Tobiasin. Yeah, it was an outstanding, John was there, I was there as well. It was a sold-out crowd at Twin Towers. Right from the fifth graders all the way on up to the high school, the performances were outstanding. I had the opportunity to thank one of the folks from the symphony for coming out to Middletown, and his response was, "Thank you, but we'd prefer that you actually come out to Newburgh and watch us perform beginning in March." So I encourage all of you to go ahead and do that. It's a beautiful event, go out with your child, and more importantly, it's important for us to support them in Newburgh because things have a way of going away if they're not supported enough by the public at large. So it's an opportunity for us as citizens in Orange County to make sure we take advantage of some of the fine arts that we have in our community, so thank you, Mr. Tobiasin.
I don't know how John got the shirt though.
Is he wearing it?
Yeah, he's wearing the shirt.
John always gets spurts.
If you want it, I'll give it to you right now.
Mr. Perino, do you want me to go with my two or do you want to do yours?
Keep a PJ.
Yeah, I'll just do my quick two because, Mr. Perino, I'm sure we'll cover the rest of the district for all of us. I do have a letter from Orange Ulster Boces, and the letter is regarding important information on the annual Boces Administrative Budget Vote and Cooperative Board Election. The component board's dinner and budget presentation for board members will be held on Wednesday, April 5th, 2017, in the multipurpose room at the Career and Tech Center in Goshen. The annual Boces Administrative Budget Vote and the board elections for Boces will be held on Thursday, April 20th. The terms of two members of Orange Ulster Boces will expire this June. If anyone is interested in serving on the Orange Ulster Boces board, please provide them with the following nomination form, which I will be giving to our district clerk. He'll have it at the board office if anyone is interested. You can also contact the district superintendent's office at Boces at 845-291-0110. The two board members whose terms are expiring this year are Lawrence Berger from Cornwall and Martha Bogart from Goshen. The length of the terms is three years. Anyone interested in running for the seats must reside within the boundaries of Orange Ulster Boces or any of its component school districts. A candidate may be, but not need be, a member of a component school district Board of Education. So if you are on the board and would like to run, you can run for Boces simultaneously. And for those in the public, you do not have to be on the Board of Education in order to run for those positions as well. And really, Middletown is the second-largest district within the Boces component. We're almost the largest, we're just behind Monroe Woodbury, and we don't have any representation on the board. We've tried for years to try to get somebody to run for him. It's actually, it doesn't involve a lot of effort as far as meetings and things of that nature, just a lot of reading material. Right now represented on that board is Greenwood Lake, Florida Union, Menacing Valley, Port Jervis, Warwick, and obviously Cornwall and Goshen with the two that are expiring now. I'm going to give this to our district clerk. The nominations, I believe, have to be in by March 21st, and then we'll be voting on it, obviously, as a school district sometime in April. In addition, at our seats this evening is the course catalog for 2017-18. I haven't looked through it, but I can tell you right now that the front page is very promising. It includes a rendition, an artist's rendering of what the high school will look like once the construction is done. So kudos to you guys for getting it done as well, so I want to thank you for that. And, Ms. Perino, it's all yours now.
Thank you. Thank you, President Estrada. I was going to speak about the side-by-side concert, but Rose and Ed did an excellent job with that. You know, it's interesting to me seeing the progression of students, because if you know students and you see them when they start and then see them as they move on to the next grade level and the next grade level, you can see the performance has been enhanced. So it's a good job, and, you know, a few years ago, just a few years ago, so to speak, we didn't have this elaborate strings program in the district. And, you know, the students involved in that will remember something like this all their lives, believe me, playing on the stage. So again, congratulations to the music department. Something else that's just around the corner is the High School Musical, March 31st and April 1st. Jim Schofield is the lead director on that, and interestingly enough, last Friday, Jim, giving his own time, and the cast giving their time, arranged a movie night, and the movie was Grease. So that's sort of a prelude to the play. Tickets are $10 and...
What's the musical?
Grease.
Oh, it's Grease, okay.
And the $7 for children and seniors. Now, if the seniors have their senior card by board resolution, they get in free to that. So that's coming up, and if you want to place an advertisement, you can give Jim a call, it's 800-700-2. He would appreciate the people advertising in the playbill. This month, of course, is Black History Month, and during the side-by-side, before the side-by-side conference, I happened to walk into Twin Towers Media Center, and they had a wonderful display of Black History books. Consequently, I spoke to Karen Cecil, and Karen is the district coordinator. She does a very nice job as coordinator, and she sent me some of these books that you can come up during the break. Brand new, The Untold Story of the Black Regiment, Days of Jubilee, Tell All the Children Our Story, Ain't Nothing But a Man, on and on and on. Now, this, Twin Towers is one building, and they are doing the Birmingham Pledge and also engaging in blended learning. They're going to have a town hall where the students will present slavery to freedom on Harriet Tubman's works and as a conductor of the Underground Railroad. They're using a multimedia approach to this. Continuing on, the elementary schools not forgotten, they're reading biographies of Afro-Americans in politics, literature, sports, they're playing under interactive games on the Underground Railroad. They're compiling a unit on Benjamin Banneker, and as Mr. McElroy can all tell us, Benjamin Banneker was an astronomer, a farmer, a scientist, on and on and on, and he rivaled Thomas Jefferson. They're writing mini-biographies of various individuals, reading and writing, and all schools have displays. So congratulations to the library media department who's playing a lead role in this. Going on for a moment, last Sunday was the, Super Bowl Sunday, was the Elks Pancake Breakfast. And the Elks Pancake Breakfast, they raise money for various items such as scholarships, the bike program which is in, which is in Middletown. And our students throughout the district play a very important part in that. Many get there at 7:00 in the morning and don't leave until 2:00 in the afternoon. We had the National Elementary Honor Society, the Monaghan National Junior Honor Society, and our NJRTC unit, the high school unit. Believe me, we got a tremendous amount of good PR from that event. There were so many nice comments about the behavior and the politeness of the students and the work of the students. And I just want to give a special recognition to the advisors, Dana Guadaramas of Maple Hill Elementary School, and Gina Churns of the faculty council was there. In Monaghan, Michelle Aberram, and that's very interesting, Michelle comes from Kingston. So all these people gave up most of their Sunday to help with this. Commander Wall and Master Sergeant Wellard. And what was very interesting, very gratifying, a number of the staff members from the district came to support the students. For example, I have to give a shout out to these people also. Carrie Anne Miranda, 7th grade ELA, Melissa Kane, ENL, Jessica Furtan and their families, 7th grade ELA, Jason Bedema, 7th grade math, Mike Coken, music teacher, attended this, and Mike attended last year also. So, you know, I see so many people doing so much extra in this district. And speaking about that, on this past Saturday, Louis Garcia from the high school staff, he chaired, he didn't chair, but he organized the chess tournament at the high school. And that's always one of my favorite events because it's sort of a laid-back event. The students come and they play chess, and there's a recognition of these students. At the chess conference, the organizer, not the organizer, but the chair of the Mid-Hudson Scholastic Chess League was there, and that was Mr. Douglas Stack, in no relation to the Stack family of Middletown. Teaches physics at Cornwall High School, very impressed with the building, the condition of the building, very impressed with our programs. We spoke a while about our programs, and he'd like to come back and see the building when it's completed. So there you have it, and it was alluded to, we just got this at our desk, the course catalogs 17 and 18, and believe me, this is reminiscent of some college catalogs. The super college program, just examples, college biology 1 and 2, forensic science, general chemistry, economics, public policy, college psychology, learning strategy, book goes on and on. There's so many courses available to students in this district, so much opportunity at all levels. You have to be willing, we can do so much, the students, you have to be willing to take advantage of everything that's offered. The three-tier structure, the parents, great involved parents, students, good students, and our wonderful faculty. And before we leave, the end, I see Megan Gugliotta in the audience, and Megan, I believe, was the primary organizer of the side-by-side concert, am I right, Megan?
This is a collective...
Yeah, but I know you contacted me, and I give you a lot of credit for doing that, and thank you.
Kevin Benedetto, please.
Yeah, good, yeah, thank you. I'm set, Mr. Estrada.
Thank you. And if anybody didn't hear, Ms. Gugliotta, Kevin Benedetto from the district is involved with the symphony, so that helped, and the kids loved it when they saw him up there too. I know my daughter recognized, ran up to him right away, so. Thank you, Mr. Perino, thorough as usual. And now we'll hand it off to Dr. Eastwood and Mr. Del Mora with our high school all county music student recognition.
Each spring, the Orange Ulster Boces area of school districts participate in the NISBA Performing Arts for our students, and this year, like other previous years, we have been recipients of many different awards and acknowledgements of our students' talent. Tonight, the K-12 coordinator, Ms. Antoinette De Pasquale, is going to talk about the actual accomplishments and highlight some of the students for their talent, but most important, about a title of a top student that we haven't had, gosh, I'm vengeful to say we had never had that recognition before one of our students, but I'm sure if I'll be corrected if that's not accurate. Ms. De Pasquale?
Thank you. Mr. Del Mora, Mr. Estrada, and Dr. Eastwood, and the school board. We're really thrilled to be here to introduce to you the high school all-county members this year. This is an auditioned thing, so not just that anyone can get in, you have to try out, you have to be one of the best performers in the county, and these students are. They work very hard, they attend extra rehearsals, they prepare music, and then they perform for the all-county festival weekend, and they put on a fantastic show that I would put up against any professional performance anywhere. They do a great job. And you had mentioned that the string program had just, hasn't been around that long, and I just want to point out that coming up, we're coming up to our 10th year now. So next year will be 10 years of this program. So we're so thrilled about that, and it's exciting to see the growth. Megan Gugliotta started with a few students at Maple Hill, and now she's up at the high school, and our students are going on to be music majors and do fantastic things. So we thank the school board and administration for being so supportive of the music program, as well as our community. So we have some Music in Our Schools Month coming up, we have some concerts coming up in March, so hopefully those will be well-attended. Our musical coming up, and so spring will be very, very busy. I'd like to introduce to you the students. First, I'll introduce to the ones that couldn't make it tonight. Unfortunately, they have jobs, they have younger siblings at home they have to take care of, but I do want to mention them. Autumn Kimball, Isaiah Oliveria, Benjamin Wall, Samuel Jackson, Christian Pachia, Faustina Elia, Sidney Magrain, Troy Collins, Alan Sun, Susan Chang, Gracie Jones, Michaela Gray, Kevin Hippolyte, Jesus Rodriguez, and Nicholas Haynes. The students that I believe are here tonight are Tapley Mann, please stand when I mention your name. Angela Fiedler. And that always cracks me up because Angela plays the fiddle. Fiedla, the fiddler. Anthony France. Daniel Cruz. Freddie Quinones. Chris Lynn Maza. And Scott Franco. Did I miss you? Samuel Johnson, you are here. All right. That's great, thanks. All right, Najee? Najee Cow. Oh, my, yeah. But before they do, I'm going to introduce Megan Gugliotta, she's our string teacher, and she's going to introduce a very special student.
Angela Fiedler is going to just give a short performance this evening. Angela was our first Middletown student to be selected for the All-State Orchestra. That was back in December. And at this past all-county festival, she also earned the seat of concert mistress. So when all the string students arrive at the festival, they have to audition for seats, and concert mistress means first chair, first file in. So that's another first for our district. So I would also like to just say, just that it's been really wonderful to see that Middletown has really become a presence at these festivals, and I couldn't be more proud of our students. So without further ado, Ms. Angela Fiedler will be performing some Bach.
Somebody else who showed up, is there?
Oh.
Can we have his name so we know?
Benjamin, Benjamin Wall.
There we go, Benjamin Seerol.
Hi, I'm Angela Fiedler, and I'm playing the Bach Partita in D minor.
Is it possible to bring you a little bit closer to the microphone?
Sure.
Stand to the...
Great.[1615.41]
this evening. Denise Trumpler, who will be hired, has been hired as a science teacher, Regents Biology, as well as General Science A teacher for Mont Hagen. If you recall, last Board of Education meeting, a parent came up and was asking about that concern. This is the hiree that we had indicated that we would be fulfilling to provide the appropriate continual instruction for our students, not only preparing our students for the eighth-grade science test, New York State Science Test, and the end-of-year final examination, but also for our Regents. We're also going to provide some extra tutorial assistance to those students who were instructed by substitutes over the last couple of weeks, so that they would be well-prepared, as are students in the past, and we have no doubt that these students will be equally successful come the Regents in June. So we're very proud that we were able to find a certified biology teacher to work with those students at Mont Hagen Middle School. So we welcome her. She was unable to be here this evening, but she will be starting tomorrow, and we look forward to her visiting at the next Board of Education meeting, if possible. Thank you. Thank you. I apologize to the students of the class. It's been turbulent. You know, that happens, unfortunately, in every single school district in the country, where sometimes there's a position or two within the district in any given year where there's some turbulence. Unfortunately, it happened in this year in the biology class, but thank you to administration for getting that fixed up very quickly, only a couple of weeks after one of our parents came up to address it. So at this time, we'd like to move up to our superintendent's report, our capital and benefits component of the school budget. Mr. Tuttel and Dr. Eastwood.
Yeah, before we start with the budget area, what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Del Mora to explain. Every year, the State Education Department reports out graduation rates, and it's put into the newspaper without any explanation about what those numbers mean, and oftentimes we get a lot of calls about that, because this year, our graduation rate, although it had increased, it only was at 78%. And people started asking, saying, "Well, wait a minute. I know that during the board meetings, you always talked about graduation rates in the '80s and how it's improved so much." So I've asked Mr. Del Mora to go through what those numbers mean that are being printed in the newspaper and what they are not. And it's oftentimes what they are not which is more important than what they are. And in addition to that, it's not just about graduation rates, as we've had a conversation with over the last many years. It's about what they do during their high school experience and get prepared for college. And in this school district, I'm very happy to talk about those accomplishments, because a number of years ago, only 9% of the graduating class would have taken college courses during their high school experience. This current graduating class, 36% would have taken college courses during their high school experience. So you see that that's a huge increase. More than a third of the graduating class now has taken or will have taken and completed graduate or college courses during their high school experience. In addition to that, more than half of those kids come from homes of poverty. And the interesting part about that was, heretofore, they would never have taken college courses during their high school experience because of the cost, nor would they may have taken them afterwards. And it's because this school district offers free college courses for credit. We offer over 102 college courses during the school year in our high school. And then the other piece to that is, which also is the other piece to this in a district like ours, where over the last 13 years, almost 13 years that I've been here, we have narrowed the gap between student performance from 16% between students that are not in poverty and are not minority and those that are. And this year, our last year, that gap has closed to 6%. And that speaks volumes for our teaching staff, what we can do here, what can be done in a high-needs district as well. And finally, the other piece to students taking college, we talked about that half of, more than half of those kids come from homes of poverty, but additionally, 84% of this graduating class and are, excuse me, 84% of the kids taking college courses that are seniors this year are of minority, are minorities. So I think that all of that together speaks volumes for the quality of programming that takes place here and its educational programs and what we can offer our students. So I can turn it over now to Rich, because I'd really like him to explain what those numbers mean that are not in the newspaper and may not be numbers and explanations that people would typically hear.
Thank you, Dr. Eastwood. Thank you, President Estrada, members of the board of education, and community at large Middletown. Recently, in the newspaper reported that our graduation rate for June of 2016 was 78%, which is accurate. Just let me just go back a minute or two here and explain how this is all calculated. When a student is enrolled for the first time in ninth grade, they're given a cohort number in which they enter September of that school year. They call it Cohort of 2012. These students that graduated in June of 2016 entered high school for the first time in 2012. So they are considered a cohort, a group of students. We had 525 students in that cohort. What was reported in the newspaper is the first of two and three reporting periods of graduation rates for that cohort. The first one is in June. What was reported was all the students of that cohort, the students that were educated at Middletown High School, as well as students educated in that cohort that belong in our district but did not. We're not going to be conversing with you during this time period. It's our opportunity as board members to listen to what you have to say. If there is a question that administration can answer for you at that moment, I'm sure they'll be able to do that. Otherwise, we'll try to answer your question at the following meeting if it needs some research to be done. So at this time, if anybody would like to come up and address the board? No? Seeing none? Any letters, Mrs. Clark? No letters? All right, we'll move on to our personnel action items. Does anybody have an issue with doing all of them together? No? So I'll need a motion for the approval of Personnel Memorandum 17A Administrative, 17B Instructional, 17C Non-Instructional, and 17D Non-Instructional.
So move?
Moved by Mr. Perino.
Seconded.
Seconded by Pastor Williams. He just beat you, Mrs. Nat. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Introduction of Personnel. Mr. Del Mora?
Yes, we do have a couple of new employees to the district that are here this evening. I'd like to begin with two of the employees that report to Assistant Superintendent for Administration. Mr. Tuttle is going to introduce two key new role players in our school district. Mr. Tuttle?
Dr. Eastwood, President Estrada, Mr. Del Mora, members of the board. Tonight, we have two new managers or supervisors that we're, for your approval. Thank you very much. The first one is Veronica, AKA Nikki, we also know her as. Nikki has been with the district for 15 years. She's been in the Personnel Department and then Technology for, I think, 12 of her 15 years. She was here when I came here 11 years ago, has been a really tremendous asset to the district. One of the qualities we're always looking for in staff is their commitment to the students in our programs. So Nikki has all those attributes. It's a great honor tonight that we appoint her as the manager for Vocation Support Manager. Nikki?
Good evening, members of the board, President Estrada, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Del Mora, and Mr. Tuttle. I look forward to serving the district in this new role, and I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
If you have any problems with the administrative software, that's who you call.
Not me. There's only solutions, there's no problems. That's all we have.
That's true. Absolutely.
That is. That's our motto, yes. There's only solutions. May not be the solution you like, but that's what we have. Okay, thank you. And the second person we'd like to introduce tonight is Deborah Dunleavy. Debbie has been appointed as the Director of Food Service. She previously was our Assistant Food Director, and previously to that, she's been in Monticello and Pine Bush School District. It wasn't long after we had, that I met Debbie and learned about her knowledge in the food service industry that this was going to be a good person for us in this school district. She's already made tremendous strides in making changes, weathering some of the storms that we have in food service, and I think it's going to be a great addition to our program, and really looking forward to some of her innovation and some creative ideas. So Debbie?
Thank you very much for that. As Mr. Tuttle said, I've been here a short period of time, but I look forward to working with all of our folks with us. I want to introduce my intern. Amanda, can you stand up for me? This is Amanda White. Amanda is attending Kaiser University online program. She is in her intern rotation with us for the first round, and she's reminding me how much fun it can really be. Okay? All right, great. Thanks.
Probably one of the more complicated food service school districts in the region, that's for sure.
Would you have one more? Do you have one more person to introduce today? We have a vacancy that was filled recently in the Art Department at the high school. I'm going to ask the principal, Mrs. Sorrentino, as well as Mr. Whitaker, who supervises the Art Department, to come up and introduce our newest member, Colleen DePico.
Good evening, President Estrada, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Del Mora, members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to stand up here with Mr. Whitaker, who I'll turn things over to in a moment, and actually welcome Ms. Colleen DePico to the district. We had a void in our computer graphics program, which we have now filled, which is very exciting for our students as we move into the new arena of our new building and our programming. So I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Whitaker for a moment to share a little bit about Ms. DePico.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Del Mora, Mr. Tuttle. I'd like to introduce Ms. Colleen DePico. You know, I had the privilege and really the honor to try to find, you know, the right candidate for this position, which, you know, obviously, the teacher needs to be knowledgeable in all the different art areas, but Ms. DePico will be teaching, you know, Foundations of Media Arts, Computer Graphics. So we were looking for someone with a strong background in Adobe, Creative Suite, and just speaking with her, Ms. Herman and I had the opportunity to interview her. You know, very strong currently working, previously or currently, whoever you look at it, I'm working at Dobbs Ferry, working with students who have special needs, and in the past has also worked at the high school level in this capacity, where she has knowledge of the software and working with kids in this capacity. So we have the utmost confidence that she's going to do a great job, and, you know, we look forward to working with her, and there's great things to come. So without further ado, Ms. DePico.
Well, I want to thank the board for confirming me tonight, and I'm really thrilled and honored by this opportunity, and I'm really excited about my future here in Middletown High School. So thank you guys so much.
Welcome to the media family.
I just want to add a few comments to the other person that the Board of Education appointed this evening, Denise Trumpler, who will be hired, who has been hired as a science teacher, Regents Biology, as well as General Science A teacher for Mont Hagen. If you recall, last Board of Education meeting, a parent came up and was asking about that concern. This is the hiree that we had indicated that we would be fulfilling to provide the appropriate continual instruction for our students, not only preparing our students for the eighth-grade science test, New York State Science Test, and the end-of-year final examination, but also for our Regents. We're also going to provide some extra tutorial assistance to those students who were instructed by substitutes over the last couple of weeks, so that they would be well-prepared, as are students in the past, and we have no doubt that these students will be equally successful come the Regents in June. So we're very proud that we were able to find a certified biology teacher to work with those students at Mont Hagen Middle School. So we welcome her. She was unable to be here this evening, but she will be starting tomorrow, and we look forward to her visiting at the next Board of Education meeting, if possible. Thank you.
I apologize to the students of the class. It's been turbulent. You know, that happens, unfortunately, in every single school district in the country, where sometimes there's a position or two within the district in any given year where there's some turbulence. Unfortunately, it happened in this year in the biology class, but thank you to administration for getting that fixed up very quickly, only a couple of weeks after one of our parents came up to address it. So at this time, we'd like to move up to our superintendent's report, our capital and benefits component of the school budget. Mr. Tuttle and Dr. Eastwood?
Yeah, before we start with the budget area, what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Del Mora to explain. Every year, the State Education Department reports out graduation rates, and it's put into the newspaper without any explanation about what those numbers mean, and oftentimes we get a lot of calls about that, because this year, our graduation rate, although it had increased, it only was at 78%. And people started asking, saying, "Well, wait a minute. I know that during the board meetings, you always talked about graduation rates in the '80s and how it's improved so much." So I've asked Mr. Del Mora to go through what those numbers mean that are being printed in the newspaper and what they are not. And it's oftentimes what they are not which is more important than what they are. And in addition to that, it's not just about graduation rates, as we've had a conversation with over the last many years. It's about what they do during their high school experience and get prepared for college. And in this school district, I'm very happy to talk about those accomplishments, because a number of years ago, only 9% of the graduating class would have taken college courses during their high school experience. This current graduating class, 36% would have taken college courses during their high school experience. So you see that that's a huge increase. More than a third of the graduating class now has taken or will have taken and completed graduate or college courses during their high school experience. In addition to that, more than half of those kids come from homes of poverty. And the interesting part about that was, heretofore, they would never have taken college courses during their high school experience because of the cost, nor would they may have taken them afterwards. And it's because this school district offers free college courses for credit. We offer over 102 college courses during the school year in our high school. And then the other piece to that is, which also is the other piece to this in a district like ours, where over the last 13 years, almost 13 years that I've been here, we have narrowed the gap between student performance from 16% between students that are not in poverty and are not minority and those that are. And this year, our last year, that gap has closed to 6%. And that speaks volumes for our teaching staff, what we can do here, what can be done in a high-needs district as well. And finally, the other piece to students taking college, we talked about that half of, more than half of those kids come from homes of poverty, but additionally, 84% of this graduating class and are, excuse me, 84% of the kids taking college courses that are seniors this year are of minority, are minorities. So I think that all of that together speaks volumes for the quality of programming that takes place here and its educational programs and what we can offer our students. So I can turn it over now to Rich, because I'd really like him to explain what those numbers mean that are not in the newspaper and may not be numbers and explanations that people would typically hear.
Thank you, Dr. Eastwood. Thank you, President Estrada, members of the Board of Education, and community at large Middletown. Recently, in the newspaper reported that our graduation rate for June of 2016 was 78%, which is accurate. Just let me just go back a minute or two here and explain how this is all calculated. When a student is enrolled for the first time in ninth grade, they're given a cohort number in which they enter September of that school year. They call it Cohort of 2012. These students that graduated in June of 2016 entered high school for the first time in 2012. So they are considered a cohort, a group of students. We had 525 students in that cohort. What was reported in the newspaper is the first of two and three reporting periods of graduation rates for that cohort. The first one is in June. What was reported was all the students of that cohort, the students that were educated at Middletown High School, as well as students educated in that cohort that belong in our district but did not. of graduation rates for that cohort. First one is in June. What was reported was all the students of that cohort, the students that were educated at Middletown High School, as well as students educated in that cohort that belong in our district but did not attend the high school, they were what we call out-of-district students, students perhaps at the Orange Oster-Bosie's program or residential programs in which they're educated. However, they're still part of that cohort. Of the students that were educated at Middletown High School, of the 525 in the total cohort, 419 of them were graduated from our high school and attended four years there. And that was 80 percent. So 80 percent of the students that attended the high school graduated in four years. What dropped us down to 78 percent was the students that were enrolled in that cohort that did not graduate, who attended out-of-district placements. Only one of the 15 students in that group out-of-district graduated. The next reporting period is August. We had another group of our students from our high school who went to summer school, seniors, and graduated. There was 27 of them. So you add those 27 from August to the June high school attending students, and then that lifts us up to 85 percent. We are permitted to report that, and the State Education Department does account for that total graduation of that cohort at that time. If you will, the curtain closes on that cohort. And there were no out-of-district graduates in August. So the total number of graduates from our high school of that cohort, by accountability purpose to State Education Department, for the 2012 cohort of that 525 original group was 85 percent, which was reported at this table several times. We are, were pleased to announce, a couple of weeks ago, we had a January graduation, which consisted of students in the 2013 cohort, who would normally graduated or will graduate in June of 2017, but graduated early. Right? And then there were 11 students from the 2012 cohort. So if you added those 11 students to the total number of students at the, in August, that's what bumped us up to 87 percent of the total students out of that cohort that was reported by Dr. Eastwood. Although the state does not recognize those 11 students that really took four and a half years to graduate, we're very proud for their persistence and stick-to-it-ness, if you think about it, to stay another semester to receive a high school diploma. So it is very important to see the different reporting periods and who is inside that group. We're very pleased to, to recognize the work of our administrators and teachers at the high school, and quite frankly, from kinder all the way up and including high school, preparing the students for graduation. And we are really on track to meet or exceed those numbers this year in our 2013 cohort, or what most people recognize, when did you graduate, 2017. We already have people graduated early. Some of them are taking additional courses, some have gone on to college already, some are working to get ready for September and expenses for their college experiences. So we're very pleased to announce these and make it clear as to what these different numbers mean. I will entertain any questions from the board at this time regarding this report.
Mrs. Knapp, do you have any? Mr. McElroy? Mr. Tobias?
Nothing.
Pastor Williams? Mr. Cressenza?
I, I taught at Bosie's, and a number of my students were from Middletown. And I was always concerned and maybe confused, I don't know if that's the right word. It would take them five years, sometimes six years, to get through high school, but as you said, they persevered, they did it, they got the high, they actually got a Middletown High School diploma, it wasn't an IEP diploma. And I don't think it's fair that they're not considered part of the cohort that started, you know, the four-year program. But as you said, I always thought that, I have, I can't think of the right word, I want to say more respect, but that's not the right way of saying it, that they knew they were behind year-wise, but yet they still stuck it out and they worked hard and got their diploma.
Obviously, the excitement and applause that each of them received knowing that achievement. But I recall, and Dr. Eastwood and I were talking about this when the report came out, we were talking about it on Monday, because I do believe it was in the paper over the weekend, that when the State Education Department, several years back, went to an all-regents diploma, I remember reading from a top administrator from the State Education Department indicating that there was going to be no more local diplomas, and that it would take some students more than four years to graduate, and they recognized that. However, that is not, as I reported moments ago, that recognition in the accountability reporting.
Yeah, this, this is very frustrating for me, too, because what, what's, a lot of this, people say, well, you know, it would be nice if people graduated in four years. And I said, well, I, I told this person that was asking me this the other day, and I said, yeah, it would be nice if everything was perfect. Unfortunately, or fortunately, how you look at this issue, not everybody is perfect according to the definition by the State Education Department for graduating. In addition to that, there are people who are new to the country, may not necessarily speak our language, and other students that come to our districts from, like New York City, who may be behind academically for a variety of reasons. But they, they come into the system, they stay in the system, they persevere through the system, and they get the same diploma as anyone that graduates in four years. And remember that a year ago, we also said, given the programs that we have here and what we know our graduates leave with, we're guaranteeing that diploma. But none of that gets recognized. And it doesn't get recognized because, from my perspective, these folks don't come down and have a conversation with us about how they set some of these rules. So they, they, in essence, create regulation and law that don't understand the needs of these students as they come into the new, into our country new, maybe ESL bilingual or other, have other educational needs, and they persevere through the system. So oftentimes, I say to them, which of these students would an employer want to hire? Someone necessarily that life has been easy for them? Or somebody who has struggled and persevered? Most of the time, if not all of the time, they, they look for the person that perseveres, because that says something about their personality, as, clearly as an employee, too. So if they hit a brick wall, or they hit a problem inside the organization at the workplace, they're going to not give up, they're going to keep moving forward and solve the problem for the company. But we don't recognize that because we're so test-driven. So it's unfortunate that we can't explain these or can't be explained in the newspaper what the realities are. We will continue to announce what our graduation rates are and that they're climbing. And not only are they climbing, but the graduates are going on to college, 60-some-odd percent of our graduates go on to post-secondary education. That never happened before. They go on now, not only to post-secondary education, but they, they go on with college education. They leave here. And think about the benefit to the family, how much money was saved by taking those courses because they could and they did and they were successful while they were at high And now they don't have to pay for those courses as they move into their post-secondary experience. That's a huge savings for families and for the kids. None of that gets recognized. So it's unfortunate that the reality of the big picture doesn't get told when the story of the numbers come out, which is unfortunate. But as I said, we're very proud of our staff, we're very proud of our students. And what they're accomplishing every year improves, increases, and speaks volumes about the system as, as a whole and what we can do. So I appreciate Mr. Delmore talking about and explaining this to everybody. And what I'd like to do then, oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Mr. Perrine?
This, this question, Rich was raised to me after the figures came out, and I explained, not as well as you did, the, the whole procedure and the cohorts and the August graduation and January graduation. Someone came back at me and says, well, don't other districts have the same problem who were rated higher than us? And I said, they, they might, but they don't have as many students involved in, in this.
Due to various economic reasons, parents, guardians who are struggling economically tend to come into where services render themselves for easy access transportation, for jobs, the type of jobs available in the Middletown School District area, and in particular, our attendance zones. And therefore, we have a high number of poverty students, minority students, as Dr. Eastwood mentioned, some of the issues of, for example, new to the country. And the regulations and guidelines do not take in consideration any of those factors, those mitigating factors. It's once, for all intents and purposes, someone steps into the high school for the first time, they can be eight years old as a prodigy or 20, they have to graduate in four years. So the fact of the matter is, we have a higher population of students that avail themselves to social programs in which many of the students, for example, to have a large number of out-of-district students just in a senior population is probably not as high in other school districts. And, you know, obviously...
I think to your point, when you're speaking to those individuals, what school districts are they comparing us, would be my question, because if you look at the graduation rates for the other small-city school districts in our area, which are Port Jervis and Newburgh, and on the other side, Kingston and Poughkeepsie, you're going to find graduation rates that are slightly below ours, because our, even if you just take the June numbers, at 78 percent, that number is higher than many, if not most, of the small-city school districts around the state of New York.
That's correct.
If you're comparing us to Chester or Warwick, I know in my conversations with the board members from Chester, they can count on, on one hand, the number, or two hands, the number of special ed students they have in their whole district.
Or the students who are free to do lunch.
So it's not...
I understand that, and that's what I've been saying, but I just wanted to get it out to the public that may be doing this. Thank you.
The state, the state recognizes for annual yearly progress, your August graduation rates, and we have met the requirement of 80 percent to hire each of the years in the past. So, you know, our students are receiving a quality education. Dr. Eastwood pointed out the salient points of their experiences here, in terms of what are they doing with their experiences upon graduation, whether it's advancing themselves in, in higher-level military positions, at their entry-level examinations, or entering some technical field of work with our Cisco Academies and so on and so forth. And of course, Dr. Eastwood talked about 60 percent of the graduational plus, they are, are moving on to post-secondary formal education, whether it's a two- and four-year. Also, there's been a large increase in students attending four-year schools than just going to our two-year programs that we have in the past. So in all areas in which you start to disaggregate this data, it's all positive. And I'd be willing to discuss that with anyone.
Very good explanation, by the way.
Rich, the whole, your whole presentation. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
What, what I'd like to see in the future, I mean, obviously, I won't be sitting at this table, but hopefully, my brethren for, for next year, if it's possible, I'm not, I, I don't want us to do more than what, you know, we're already doing, because I, I do think from a technology perspective that it's easy to get the information. But to me, the 70, whether it's 78 percent, 80 percent, 85 percent, they have their diplomas, whether it's June, August, January, they have them. I'm not as concerned about them, they've got their, I'm concerned about the 15 and 20 percent that don't, didn't get the diploma, and trying to find a reasoning behind why those have it. I have my own ideas as to why I think they have it, and you've outlined some of them tonight. But I'd also like to find out if, for instance, so the cohort we're talking about now is the 2012?
This year?
It's 2013.
2013. But the, the one that we're talking about is 2012.
We're talking about 2012.
Is, so let's say you have 100 students out of that cohort that you know, as of right now, don't have a diploma. I'd be interested in to find out if, going back at those students, find out when they entered our school district, whether they came in as elementary students or as, at the latest, I would say, the beginning of middle school. Because I, I think, if you're going to tell me 100 kids so far from that cohort have not gotten their diplomas, that a very low percentage of those 100 that are outstanding are not kids that have started and been here for a very long period of time, that they're probably students that came to us very late in, in their educational life, and the school district, obviously, they came from circumstances that didn't provide them the educational support that they needed, and now we're kind of left here holding the bag to try to play catch-up with them. And a lot of them drop out because they, you know, it's a big wall to jump at that point. But I'd be interested in knowing that number. How many of those students who didn't get certificates were Middletown kids who started in elementary school? Because then we have a broader issue to discuss here, right?
So I can tell you pretty much, because we look at those numbers, not exactly, but the vast majority, and that's why I said earlier, the vast majority of the students that graduate are, do not graduate, the vast majority of the students that do not graduate have not been here very long. They're new to the system, and they typically have some struggles academically where they came from. So the state, once you step into our building, if you're ninth grade or older, you're in that cohort. It doesn't matter what your history is. So if they come from another district, they're out of that district now, but they're in our cohort.
But I think, you know, you're 100 percent right, we can't rely on the newspaper writing what, what are the real numbers behind everything, and we can't expect the state to push the numbers they think they should push. They're just going to throw numbers out, and the newspaper grabs whatever it wants to grab and print it. So I think it behooves us, when we're talking here at this table, like we're doing tonight, to make sure that information, even through our website or whatever, gets out to the public, so they're looking at the real numbers. And I think part of those numbers should be, an X amount of kids have not gotten their certificates from that year, and approximately whatever percentage of them were students that were not in district from whatever grade you choose. I, I would think that you want kid, you want to know if anybody hasn't come here from sixth grade on, middle school on, because then, then you're really behind the eight ball there.
I, I also, let me just, I, I also want to remind everybody that one of the other things that we did put into place when we stopped social promotion, and we have all these interventions at the earlier grades, we did that because we looked at the graduation data, those dropping out can be traced back all the way to kindergarten. People don't realize that. They show signs there, they're socially promoted, these kids move on, they can't do the work in the next grade, so by the time they get into the fifth, sixth grade, that's where the behavior starts to change for them, because they become so frustrated by what's going on and acting out, and then they, they turn into dropouts as well. You can see all these signs of kids not coming to school through attendance, they're tardy a lot, they're frustrated because they're not successful... a lot, they're frustrated because they're not successful. And we fix that, if you want to call it that, at the elementary level, in our two-year programs, our no-social-promotion, and all the interventions that we're doing. So the percent, percentage of kids moving on proficient is growing in large numbers as every year goes by. Now, that's going to move up the system. And theoretically, and I use that word theoretically by the time they get into high school at ninth grade, we should have a significantly larger population that are ready for high school material, especially algebra, which is the first brick wall, and then the other exams of English and social studies. So that's going to take time, though. Right? So if we've started that three years ago, we have another 10 years before they become seniors and graduate. And it's a long-term process, but the wave seems to be moving in that direction.
So, but to our point that we're all making here is that, so now we've provided our, the support for the folks who are here.
It's the ones that come in late.
It's the ones that come in and don't have those additional extra years that they would need. But, you know, to our point is, we want that figure so we can now address, put more resources to the area that really needs the improvement, which is that area. And I don't know what the answer is, but statewide, whether it becomes, if you're not, if you transfer or whatever, you're not proficient by, you know, sixth or seventh grade or something, then there's some sort of alternative pathway where you're going to school almost 365 as opposed to just September to June in order to try to play catch-up. So I don't know what the answer is, but I think each and every year, when we're presenting our graduation rate, we should also maybe present the figures of those who didn't graduate so we can show to the public that, listen, what we're doing from kindergarten to 12th is working. The problem is, is when somebody comes in midstream. Because otherwise, you might give the impression that the ones who aren't graduating are kids that started here in kindergarten, so there's a problem throughout the entire process. So, thank you very much. It was very informative.
Nice job.
If there's no other questions, then I'm going to move on to our budget presentation with Mr. Tuttle.
Hi, good evening, President Estrada, members of the board, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Delmore. Tonight is our third evening of budget presentations. Tonight we'll review the capital and benefits component of the budget. One thing that we always want to keep in mind at this time of year in February is that we don't have hard numbers yet from state aid. We have their best guesses based on previous year's information. So we're always trying to collect data, and data does change, you know, what I'm finding is day to day. So we're getting, we're collecting that data, and it's really vital to the operation here to creating the budget. So we're doing the capital tonight. The capital piece and the benefits, capital is 15 percent of the total budget, and the benefits roughly about 21 percent of the total budget. So a little bit more than the administrative, but not quite as much as the instructional Here's some of our assumptions that we talk about at each meeting. The 3 percent annual inflation, the teachers' retirement system, 10 percent increase, the employees' retirement system is at 16.5. Our health insurance, which is going to be, one of the things that we're going to really have a deep conversation about, is estimated at 20 percent, could be as high as 23, 24. We're working very diligently to correct that, so we would be down maybe 10 percent or even less than that. Our state aid increase this year is 3 percent. And then we'll talk about our community schools, which we, has increased 66 percent, which we can allocate some specific programs into the community schools. Here's our seven-year history of capital. It's a little bit higher this year, you'll see in our budget with debt service, and we'll explain that when we get to the slide. But see, it has its ups and downs based on each year and when things are coming off of debt service. So what makes up our capital budget, the three, the three real big components, we have operations and maintenance, and then we have our debt service, about $2.1 million increase this year. So a little bit overview of our debt service, things to consider, like current capital project, which is at the high school and other buildings that are going on. We began payments on that in 17, 18. State aid construction increase is projected to be about 2.5 million more this year. That's to offset our debt service. So the increase in the debt service will be offset by state aid. And that's for us closing out previous projects, and then we start receiving aid on them. Looking at some other things to consider is paying down some of the band debt, which is our band, or our bond anticipation note that we sign up for just about every year for our debt service, for paying down the principal that helps us with payments and interest each year after that. We'll be starting our 2016 referendum payments, maybe by the end of the year, 2017, 18. So that's on there. And one of the things we can start doing is asking for early state aid on some of our projects. So if we get a certain percentage done of a project, we can start asking for aid in the following year. And one of the things that debt service does help us with is our tax cap limitations. So if you, the more debt you have, the greater your tax cap can be. So that's one of those other things we want to consider as we're getting deeper into the budget. And that helps us with revenue, and that'll be next discussion in two weeks. Here's a seven-year history of our benefits. So right now, the year, this year, you see a big increase, primarily due to healthcare. Right now, projected in our budget is about 23 percent increase just to cover the unknown. We do not know, there's been talk of 20 percent, it's been talk of 26, as high as 26 percent. So I'm hedging in the middle of all that, and hopefully, like I said, that'll come down drastically once some solutions have been found for us.
What's your opinion?
That is, that's a good question. So the blue is the actual dollar amount of the budget, and then the red is the percentage of the budget for that year. Sorry, that's a good question. So you'll see, this year, we're at 40 million, right around 40 million, at 12.93 percent increase. What makes up our benefit expenditures, the employer's retirement system, teacher's retirement system increase, these are all increases, our social security contribution, our workers' compensation contribution, and our big one this year is health and dental insurance contribution, looking at the 23 percent increase. Our welfare benefit for teachers, so that total increase is 4.6 million in the benefit and benefit expenditures this year. We have, we have some additional budget requests for consideration this year, with some of the additional spaces being added at the high school, and then we also have some additional space at Truman Moon being utilized. Right now, we're at Truman Moon, 10 of the classrooms are occupied by BOSIs, and then the school district is using roughly eight to 10 of those classrooms for district construction, and we have administrative and clerical spaces being utilized as well. There's a gymnasium, and there's cafeteria going on, all those things are happening over there. So these are just additional budget requests for consideration when we get down to there. So here's a summary, and this is our proposed, so if you go down the 17, 18 proposed, these are what I presented the past couple of weeks, and you'll see we're at a 9.08 percent increase over last year's budget in total. Roughly a $15 million increase. Now, these are, right now, our, our best guesses at how the state aid comes in. We're also waiting for BOSIs. BOSIs, we will not have that information until March, same with state aid. So we're going on, hedging on what our best guesses are with the budget. It could be better, it could be more favorable. However, I'm concerned about the healthcare dripping down to us through BOSIs as well as our own. So those are the things that we're concerned about this year.
Can you stay on this slide a second?
Yeah.
And just clarify for people, because they're going to see a 9.33 percent in capital.
Yes.
And the assumption's going to be that because of the construction, those figures are going sky-high. But can you counter what that, the reality that that 9.33 is?
Right. So I was briefly discussing a little bit about debt service. So our debt service goes up on our principal and our interest, but what ultimately happens is, we're receiving about 2.5 million more in state aid for construction this year. So that'll offset pretty much our increase in the capital. So.
Which we planned.
We planned for that, yeah.
Right. So I want, I want to stress something that's been very important. Since I've been here in 2004, so I'm in my 13th year, we've done significant capital projects here over the year, and the facilities show that. I mean, we're in really good shape. The total of the amount of capital projects since I've been here, I'm not counting the 2003 project that was started and wasn't worked on until after I got here, we had to pick it up because of all the situation that was going on before me. But we, we're not counting that in the projects that we've managed. We've managed about $138 million worth of capital projects over the 12 years. And the increase in the tax levy, which is important, the increase in the tax levy for that 183, right?
138.
$138 million.
Right.
Was $150.
$150,000.
$150,000. And the average cost of the homeowner is about $10. So if you think about it, $10 for $138 million worth of capital projects. And a lot of people think that we're blowing smoke, and over the course of years, if you remember these capital projects, we've had people from the community that didn't believe us, have publicly stated that, have publicly gone to the state education department in disbelief, and all, and, let me say, in all cases, received letters from the state education department that our numbers were correct. So I want to repeat that. $138 million worth of capital improvements, all right? And the tax levy for those projects have only gone up $150,000, or an average cost of $10 per the average household in our school district. Piece to that is that because of the financing, and then coming in, the strategies around financing, and then coming into low interest rates, we have saved on all of those projects in interest alone over $40 million. So I want to clarify, you're going to see 9.33 is an increase, but there's a revenue from stated, from state aid on those projects that wipe those out. Okay? So it, we have to show it, but the reality is, it's really, it's wiped out or zeroed out by state aid increases as well.
We'll see that in the revenue portion.
There'll be revenue, yeah.
Meaning.
Can you say that again? We have saved, great, $40 million?
Since I've been here, we've done capital improvement projects that are close to $140 million. Of the $140 million, the increase to the tax levy has only been $150,000, which equals about $10 per the average household for that $150,000.
And that's over 12 years.
It's over 12 years. The other piece of that is, not only have we been able to improve our facilities in dramatic ways, but the investing and financing of all of those loans, because of how they were financed and the timing of financing, getting certain rates that were extremely low, we've saved over $40 million in what we had announced to the public it would cost us over the cost of the loans.
So we saved $40 million in interest?
In interest, basically, yes.
Also, the amount of money some of our improvements have brought back into the district, such as the playing fields and whatever.
Yeah. Those are, you're, very good, thank you very much. That, those are things that people don't see. The facility, especially the one over at the high school, we've talked about that many times, that's now, I'll call it valued to this community in payback about anywhere, depending on the activity, a half a million to $3 million on an annual basis, based on which sports events that we're bringing into the district. So that goes into the community, not us, but you're absolutely right. It's more dollars into the pockets of the, the community and the businesses that are in this area. Absolutely. Pastor Williams? You're good? Mr. Chisenzo? You're good? Mr. McElroy?
Mr. Tuttle, do, do we have any idea, like, at the last meeting, we, I think, told the public that we were investigating other options with the health insurance. How, where are we in that process, I guess?
We, we've done some work already, and hopefully, in mid-March or early March, we'll have some information, some preliminary information. We've held a meeting with administrative presidents to discuss the situation that we're in, just so they're aware. We're going to have another meeting of follow-up with them, just for transparency purposes. I mean, we're, we're really, want to make sure everyone is aware, we were actually looking for maybe a possible board member to join us at the table, if they're looking to, if anyone's available. But we've, at the last meeting, we, or two meetings ago, we approved a consultant to start looking at our, some of our options. And we've done some of the preliminary work to start that piece. So it's underway.
Do, does it seem realistic that we're going to have something by the time we have to have a formalized budget?
I hope so. We were talking about that. So that's why we're pushing for early March. You know, by the time we make a, adopted, by the time we adopt the budget here, we'll have information.
All right. And, you know, like, part, part of my concern, which I'm sure would be the concern of anybody who's in the healthcare plan, is, you know, any type of change that you're going to make, no matter how good a job we do, is going to cause angst. And, you know, I certainly don't want to be in a position where, you know, I have to vote on something that, I mean, I know that there are contractual guarantees, if I understand correctly, that it has to be as good.
Yes.
As what is currently offered. We have to make sure that it, that it is truly as good. Because healthcare is so important to so many people, and no matter what we do, there's going to probably be, you know, little situations here and there.
Well, that's why we've invited all the players to the table. All the, you know, so we have a representative from NICE, we have a representative from CSEA, we have a representative from the administrators and supervisors, and then from the administrators. So in other words, they're hearing the same information we're hearing, and they can have those conversations with the folks. The analysts that we're bringing in understand the program that we have now and the protection that we have now. What we're trying to do now is get the experience record over the last few years. Once we have that information and give it to our consultants, then they can go to town. And we're hoping that that all takes care of itself within the next couple of weeks. Because once they do that, he's already been in this state working, he already knows how to plug it in for a better term and where we can go. And that's why Mike is saying that we're hoping by the time we have to adopt the budget, we'll have some very, very good idea of what the true cost is going to be.
I, I trust that there's a Plan B.
There is a Plan B.
Yeah.
And it's a lot of cuts.
23 percent.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for me. No, I think that's enough.
Ms. Spies?
Could you explain on the spreadsheet that we have with the capital components under under account number sixteen twenty, forty twenty, furniture and equipment, safety, that's a seventy-three thousand dollar increase. Safety has me a little concerned, so I was wondering if you could explain it?
Yeah, um, there's actually two account codes there, both for furniture and equipment, one is just for sa, we're looking at some of the items we would possibly need for the high school, on the third floor, on the bottom, some additional equipment.
Well, what, what has me a little, is the word "safety"? Is there, should we be con-
No, I mean, we're probably just putting, it's probably, it's equipment for, you know, AEDs and things like that, that we may, we may need in those specific areas or something.
Okay. I mean, 'cause that's a gigantic increase.
Yeah.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six line down.
Under which category?
Furniture.
Operations.
Oper, yeah.
Like the first-
Under operations?
Right, it's seventy-three thousand dollars.
Oh, we're building a whole new area there.
Oh, yeah.
New areas.
Right? You know, I mean-
I know, but it's a little scary when you see the figure, and you're figuring, how much of a percentage increase is that? And that?
Alright, those are our, those are our proposal, and we can certainly look at each item.
Any more questions, Ms. Vines?
No, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Knapp, 'cause we skipped over you.
No, I, I think that, the main thing that I think we need to emphasize is that there's a lot of this here that we can't control, and I think that's very important to repeat over and over. Employees retirement, teachers' retirement, social security, workman's comp, welfare benefits, none of that we can really control, so it's really just the insurance concept, and, like we said, we hope to have a comparable program. So, hopefully this gentleman will help us and give us some new guidelines, that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. Mr. Perino?
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle, for the presentation. Any estimation of our tax cap yet?
We're, we're still working on it, I mean, I can get, I don't wanna give you a ballpark until we present it next week, and then you'll have a good, you know, 'cause if I present something today, they come out with some numbers next week, and then I don't-
Okay.
You know, then it's more challenging to explain why.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. I concur with what Mrs. Knapp mentioned, and, in regards to the fact that, you know, some of these are uncontrollable, but I do wanna, you know, and I think we've discussed it already, that it's not only not controllable by us, but it's also unsustainable moving forward.
Yeah.
We have to do something, because the prognosis after this year, if we were to remain within the same health insurance plan, is just as big an increase next year, and it doesn't take much, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to take a look at that board and see a four point six million dollar increase, and four point one million dollars of it is in health insurance.
Right.
It's not, I, I, I think all of the parties that are gonna be sitting there are gonna be very interested parties, but also know the problem that the district is facing, and that it's unsustainable, not just for this year, but in, in the future moving forward. And, the public should also know, this is not a unique problem to Middletown this year with the health insurance. The health insurance consortium consists of most of the districts within this, within Orange County, and all of them have the same concerns.
Even, just a second, even the ones that are not part of the consortium are part of the state, right? Michael? Yeah?
Yeah, so-
Okay, and what's the percentage that, it's estimated that that state number will go up?
They're, they're estimating it's higher than what ours is gonna be in January, so we don't know. I mean, they're, the numbers are fluid, I mean, it's, it's up and down, everyone is scrambling to do RFPs to get different pharmacy, pharmaceuticals, different, you know, they're, they're working on it, but, you know, it's hard with the mass numbers that they have and the experiences.
Meanwhile, Congress right now, you don't even, we don't even know what type of health insurance-
No, we don't know.
Stipulations are gonna come down the pike within the next year. So, you know, it, it is a concern, not only for our district, but everybody out there in general, in just about every industry. We'll try to do our best here, or, really administration, we don't have to do anything but to kinda take a look at the, the final result and make, have an action on it, but, you know, the public needs to know that this is unsustainable for this district, and that something needs to be done, otherwise, there's two choices, and a very, exceeding our tax cap, or having drastic cuts.
Drastic cuts.
One way or the other, so, and I think we, I think this district has, or this Board of Education over the years has proved that it's not been very favorable to even thinking about exceeding the tax cap. So, you know, our choices are very limited. Anybody else wanna make? Mr. Chisenzo?
Um, do we have any collective bargaining agreements open this year?
A couple of them, but not, not the big players.
Only one.
Not the big ones?
That one opens up after July.
Okay. And, I asked this last time, and it's kind of more of a rhetorical question, is, is anybody anywhere trying to address the reasons why these costs are rising so dramatically?
They have a lot, they've done a lot of investigating, and there's a lot of different things. They're saying the claims are up over the past year, they're seeing different patterns of medical needs, there's specialized medicine being implemented, it's very expensive, they're seeing multiple visits at a facility, you know, by different doctors, for different, you know, and it's just, it's a claim everywhere they go.
And, and Dr. Eastwood pointed out, I don't know if he wants to make that point again, is regarding the use of our clientele, so when the consortium is saying that hospital visits and all this other stuff are up, it may not necessarily be by our district. Right, we, you know, we, we have a portion of our, we, we have some experience based on the issues associated with our, our staff, but, we also have one of the youngest, if not the youngest, staff in the area, and that's, in a way, if you're a, yeah, I'm trying to remember the word, but, if, if you're somebody who understands health insurance, a district like ours would be predicted to have less experience, let's call it that, given the age, the youngness of our staff, so, it's, it's a positive for us. But, you know, we, we don't wanna say things now that we could, somebody could say, "Well, you told us X, Y, and Z," but, we've been studying this, and studying this, and studying this, we're going to stay with the mantra right now, that we're in deep trouble because of health insurance until the complete analysis is done, and a decision can be made, and use that decision to plug numbers into this budget. And that's a good month away.
Yeah. One of the things that's important, too, is, it's not just for active members, it's our employees, it's also retirees that are affected as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tuttle. Moving on, with such great news, is, I need a approval, a motion to approve Financial Memorandum Number Eighteen.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. McElroy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries still seven? Yep, seven, zero. I need a motion for approval of Special Services Memorandum Number Sixteen.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. I need approval for change orders that were contained within our packets, most of them were of minor compared to things in the past. I need a motion, moved by Mr. McElroy. Seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Moving on quickly to our committee reports, audit, Ms. Vineson?
Next audit committee meeting is April twenty-seventh at six o'clock, unless we can move it up to four-thirty.
Got a nice vacation there.
But we're busy working. She, our clerk makes sure that we get our weekly claims audit reports.
Buildings and grounds, Pastor Williams. Nothing new. Change orders, Mr. McElroy?
No, we just approved some small ones at the high school, and, you know, hopefully not, nothing big coming anytime soon.
And what we're trying to do is schedule a board tour sometime the first week in March, for the construction project, 'cause it's really moving along well over there.
The only other thing I would add is, in, in meeting with Mr. Scott, he said that we're still within the contingency on the high school project, which-
Cross my fingers, every, every time I go to sleep at night, he's thinking about that.
He's got a few other tricks up his sleeve, yeah. But, they, they know what they're doing, and, you know, they always make sure that they are getting the, the best work at the best price, and they do a really good job, so.
Diversity committee, anything, Pastor Williams? Fair funding? We're trying to work out some scheduling stuff, I'm still trying to get Mr. Warren to see if he can help, there's an issue with timing of their meeting, so I might need a board member if they don't coincide with Mr. Warren's schedule to take part in them, otherwise, I can always go, but I'll keep you updated on that, right now they haven't set anything up. IEP's going well, Mr. Perino?
Mrs. Clark keeps me busy.
Local government liaisons, none of our Town Hall Hill reps are still here, so we'll move on to the city of Middletown. Anything, Mr. Chisenzo? Nothing?
You know, Middletown is in the midst now of deciding how to, how to disseminate the ten million dollar grant, so, but, a lot of the proposals that went on during the meeting, I didn't get a chance to go to the meeting, the whole meeting, I was only there for a part of it, and just as, just as a, a resident of City of Middletown, but, a lot of the stuff that they're proposing is, is really good for this area.
Absolutely. Lot of downtown revitalization.
Lot of downtown revitalization, and some of the things that they're, that they're, that they're trying to bring in, and the thing is, is that they're also have been very open to suggestions from the community, so-
One of the concerns I would have when you guys go to the meeting is, I know some of the grant money's being used for the psych center property, for the new college that's going over there, and, you know, we've had some inklings about a possible charter, like? No? Don't call it charter. It's not charter?
It's not a charter.
They don't call it charter. No, it's, it's, well, by regulation, it wouldn't be a charter. It would be considered a, by regulation, it wouldn't be a charter, it would be a private school.
How does that affect us?
In a charter, there is transfer of per pupil expenditures out of the district into the charter, and, the regulations are a little bit different, but in a private school, it's privately run. And, and they have a lot of, they're insulated up in the State Education Department from a lot of things, so, they don't have to follow the same graduation requirements, they don't have to follow the same regulations, there's a lot of freedom there, so.
And what's our cost on the private school, if it's a private school?
There's none for us.
What's the grade level?
I don't know that information right now.
You're in the beginning stages.
They're starting up and moving down, and starting up, starting lower and moving up?
No, I think they're starting older and moving down. I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm gonna leave, I'll leave it at that. Okay. Just to be on the horizon, if you hear anything at any of their meetings about that.
The Times Herald Record had an article in about the property behind us, the Clemson property, that is, the city now owns. I was gonna bring it, and I didn't bring that newspaper article, just so you're aware. I guess it passed at the last common council.
Yeah.
And I don't think they can do anything with it. For two years.
Looking to use the gardens, give the gardens to SUNY Orange.
Right.
Was a discussion for their students to use, but, we'll see down the road.
They should give the, you know, have the college by the house for the president.
Okay, so that's City of Middletown. There was something else that I wanted to say, and I forgot, that I wanted to keep, but I'll figure, I'll, I'll try to remember it. Orange County School Board Association, the capital conference was called off because of a snowstorm in Albany this past weekend. It is set to be rescheduled, though, I anticipate that it won't be rescheduled, because they'll be in the middle of very long budget talks from March first on, and I don't think they want lobbying during that time, but we'll see what happens, I'll keep you guys abreast of that as well. New York State School Board Association, Mrs. Blumanow and Dr. Eastwood gave a report at our last meeting. Parliamentarian, anything, Mr. McElroy? I did everything right except for roll call.
No big deal.
Policy. Policy. I'm going to send an email tomorrow. I did, but the schedule, I had it scheduled, and then nobody came, no, you're good, though. We still have to go over the ones that you sent us in January. No, I'll get to you later. So, I'm gonna send another email for next week's for dates. Are there dates already that you guys know? I know Mrs. Blumanow's not here, and I have to check with her. For next, Tuesdays are always bad for you, so I'll try to shoot for, we'll talk, I just wanna, I don't wanna keep the rest of the board here.
Can we back up a second? Under, when you were talking about our trip to Albany being canceled, I think what NISBA was urging us all was to make some appointments and visit our assembly and-
The problem with that is that they're not gonna be in district all of March.
No, no, but I think they were saying be, be, in that span between now and March, but then I think you've got some holidays in that.
Yeah, that's, that's only, that's like a week, right? The end, it's a week and a half, not even. I don't think it's gonna happen.
Okay.
It'll be difficult for us to get Aileen Gunther and John Bonisick locally, 'cause they're gonna spend all their time up in Albany the next thirty days. So we did policy, safety, security, Mr. Perino?
We're good.
Okay. And, we'll talk later about the teacher center and Mr. Pierre. Moving on to our second opportunity to address, if anybody would like to address the board. I think we tired 'em all out, guys. Roundtable, Mr., Pastor Williams, anything for roundtable? Mr. Chisenzo? Mr. McElroy? Mr. Vineson? I'm good. Mr. Perino?
He's good, too.
Just one thing.
See?
Nikki?
It's okay.
I wanna say you've helped me tremendously all the years you've been here. You're a go-to person for the troubleshooting, the first step. Good for you, congratulations. You're a big asset to this district.
My experience with Nikki, she always directed me to the correct person.
The only thing I have to add is, if folks are interested to run for the school board, you can pick up petitions since last week, I think, or two weeks ago, from our district clerk at the board office on Wisner Avenue, she can also be reached at three-two-six-eleven-ninety-six, and that's Taryn Clark, our district clerk. There are three positions open, which will be Mr. McElroy, my position, as well as Mr. Pierre, and, come on our board if, if you're interested, so, please be an active member of your community. Any, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Vineson, seconded by Mr. Perino. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven, nothing. We'll see you on March second, our next board meeting. Thank you, and have a good evening.